I'm going to call us to order for a regular city council meeting for December the 7th, 2020. Hang on one second as I scroll here. All right, with that, Councilmember Owens, would you lead us in an invocation followed by Councilmember Perez in our pledges to the United States and Texas flags?
Yes, I will. I'd like to say one thing in the beginning, Mayor, if I could, and thank the city for lowering the US flags that have staffed today at our facilities. This is a very important day for us as Americans, so for the Pearl Harbor Day. So I really appreciate that being done. I had many people today to stop my desk while they were down, and I was proud to tell them why. Okay, dear heavenly fathers, we come to you today, Lord, we thank you for this day that you've given us, Lord, and each one of the prayers and blessings that each one of us have received over this period of time, Lord. We pray for all those that lost their lives, Lord, during World War II and in Pearl Harbor Day and the bombing on the island there in Hawaii. If it was not for those people during this period of time, we would not live in a country with freedom that we have today. And so there's a lot of blessings that we should pray for those that lost their lives, men and women, in those period of time than those that are left on with us now. Lord, we ask that you come back, be with us as we're in this council member tonight, the council meeting, that you be with us as we make decisions in the best interest of the citizens of the city of Pearland, to be with us in those periods of time that we're making those decisions. And as we come into the Christmas season, Lord, we celebrate that period of time of Christmas and being with and really understand what the true meaning of this Christmas is and what it means to us. And we pray for all those, Lord, that has a virus. We pray for their recovery, to bring it back in, you know, to bring them, to save them and to get the vaccine out soon as we can, Lord, to be able to come in and save the lives of millions or thousands of people that we have today. We ask all these prayers and blessings in your name. Amen.
All right, if you'll join me for the pledge of allegiance to the US flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now to the Texas flag, honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, thank you both for opening us up. And I concur, Councilmember Owens, today is a momentous day as we celebrate or honor those who stood in the gap on December the 7th, 1941 there in Pearl Harbor for what they did. So we appreciate all of them and certainly their families as we mourn those that we lost that day, but as importantly, what they did for us. With that, I'm going to move to a roll call real quick, and I'm just going to call out names and make sure we have everybody in a certification of quorum. We have Mayor Protem Little.
Here.
Councilmember Orlando.
Here.
Councilmember Carbone.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Yes, sir, Mayor, here.
Councilmember Perez.
Present, Mayor.
There we go. Councilmember Owens.
Hi, here.
All right, we have a full house tonight, so I'm going to certify that we do have a quorum. With that, Mayor Protem Little, I believe we have a couple of citizen comments tonight, so I'll let you take it.
Thank you, Mayor, that's correct. We have two people signed up to speak. One is speaking on agenda item number four, so we'll wait till we get to that item. Till I speak, and then the other speaker is Jimmy Davis. Mr. Davis, see you on.
I am.
State your name and address, and you have three minutes to speak.
Okay. Jimmy Davis, 5004 Homestead Street, Pearland, Texas, 7584. Gentlemen, today I also want to say thank you to all the men and women like my dad, who served, who lied about his age so he could go and serve this nation on World War II. So to all who are listening and those who can't, I thank you for your service. You are indeed the greatest benorish. Gentlemen, I think for the last meeting that you put off the discussion, when you said last tell us about base charges and final bills and the true love plan, I appreciate Councilman Perez bringing up the residents who's email saying, hey, let's just wait. So I am thankful you all didn't go down the path of making residents pay 13 monthly base charges for nearly three years, which is the path you were going to go down. I would point to the city ordinance of which I sent y'all a slip from, that the city ordinance does state that the base fee is a monthly fee. I've never seen our calendar have 13 months. We have the water bill and debacle because for nearly three years, the city chose to read meters 13 times a year, which means one week should never have a base charge. I'd also point to early meetings for John Branson, the first meeting, one of the options to have us caught up this year. It's going to be like 15 bills. And he said, but we'll only charge you 12 base charges and we'll create the rest because it's a monthly base charge. Gentlemen, do not make the catastrophic mistake of saying someone that wants to get caught up owes a base charge for every outstanding meter read because you'll bring significant financial harm on the city. Last meeting, they discussed negative consumption meter reads, and I highlighted Nancy Massey's statement where Councilman Carbone asked about the positive and negative meter reads on the resident whose meter was allegedly installed backwards. And he asked about a new response from Miss Massey was, and I quote, "I'd like to go ahead and look into that because that was a question I had too." It jumped out to me that that wasn't a question that she already had, that she was already looking into. She's going to look into it, and she all brought it up because it didn't hold water. We know there are meter issues. That meter had an issue, that's why they replaced it. The grain meter, the grain family that had 40 hours that the meter reported nothing, then just magically reconnected the wire on its own. Amazing. Well, that meter malfunctioned. Randy Lewis, the million plus gallons a month, per meter malfunction. Y'all replaced it for a different. And now, you know, this normal operation that Miss Massey told the news was just perfectly normal. You're now inundated with an influx of complaints as a result of the news report, and the water bill and discussion group has a thousand people in it. Yeah, this isn't normal. I think you're going to get a visit in January from a few of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. That completes the speakers for now, Mayor. We'll come back to Mr. Jeff about our agenda item number four.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Protem Little. Thank you, Mr. Davis, for your comments. We're going to move on to item number five, which is consent agenda. Councilmember Orlando, can you put that on the table? Before we do, are there any items to be removed?
Yes, Mayor, this is Member Hernandez. I would like to remove Charlie C.
C, okay. Members, any others? Hearing none, Councilmember Orlando, would you put the consent agenda on the table minus C as in Charlie?
Here, also, I had my phone on my deal, but I had a mail fall, so.
F as in Frank?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Orlando, did you get C and F, Charlie and Frank?
Yes, good to go.
Good deal.
All right, consideration and possible action on the consent agenda items A through F, with the exceptions of C and F. So moved.
Second, Hernandez.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Rohn, would you call for the vote?
Member Orlando.
Aye.
Member Carbone.
Aye.
Member Little.
Aye.
Member Hernandez.
Aye.
Member Moore.
Aye.
Member Perez.
Aye.
Member Owens.
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero to adopt consent items A through F, with the exception of items C and F.
All right, thank you, Ms. Rohn, and moving forward to item number C. Councilmember Carbone, would you place that on the table?
Yep, thank you, Mayor, consideration and possible action, second reading of ordinance number 1595-1, so moved.
Second, more.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're open for discussion.
Mayor, I asked for this to be pulled. I wasn't here for the first reading, but one of the things that jumped out to me in one of the proposed 21 appropriations under the general fund was the comprehensive plan update, and I just wanted to bring it forward for council to consider, you know, thinking about the timeline for this if we do move forward with this allocation for the comprehensive planning, that we kind of get ahead of this, and I think that we'd had a previous discussion about council having a retreat of our own and maybe kicking this off so that we can hold each other accountable, but also, you know, be a little bit more involved in the comprehensive planning this time around. So I just wanted to bring that forward to the rest of the group. I don't necessarily have an issue with this. I think that it's a good time. I know on the write-up it talked about us having to delay it the first time because of COVID. I think there's lots of uncertainty on the horizon, but I think we have an opportunity to, when we start planning, think about, you know, the resiliency efforts that we want to undertake as a city to make us more, you know, immune to the effects of these types of impacts and so forth. So I just wanted to put that out there. I haven't really heard much feedback on the proposed timeline for the council retreat and wanted to see if anybody had anything else to add to that. That's all I had. Appreciate that.
All right, Councilmember Hernandez, I think that's a good comment. And I would ask a question of Clay. Do, if, you know, if approved and done, what's the timeline on rolling out and getting started on the comprehensive plan update? I did have a conversation with Community Development Director John McDonald on Friday and talked a little bit about the comprehensive plan, but we didn't really talk about timelines. So do you have a timeline on that?
I don't have anything specific other than that I know that we're going to approach a little bit differently this time. We've got a good experienced group of staff planners, and so we're looking forward to having some of the elements done in-house and then supplement that with this contract, with contracts, probably plural. So if you don't mind, let me follow back up, and once we get this approved and ready to go, we can get you a better paper on that.
Okay, that sounds good. One of the things that I think is important here, obviously, we're setting, we have a Planning and Zoning Commission as well. Over the last several months, have had some new members come on there. We've got a new member coming on as we speak in Daryl Eisenberg. I know he's a new old member. He's been on before. And with the comprehensive plan, one of the things that Mr. McDonald talked about was, you know, some new and different, you know, residential types and those types of things. And so I think it's real important that as a council, goes back to what Councilmember Hernandez talked about, is having some type of goal retreat, lack of a better term, we can do it in-house, doesn't have to be, you know, outside the city, but some meeting where the council gets together, really give some input and discussion on the future planning of our city. I think now's the time to do that. And I think it'd be important to bring planning and zoning as a part of that. In addition to that, I think it's important, as Mayor, I'd like to lead us in some type of a direction as part of our annual budget timeline, you know, a goals of the actual council. I know we have the different white papers, and I know our staff does various goals, but I'd like to make sure that we do some team building and those types of things with the council itself, so we're all on the same page. Councilmember Moore, I know you're about to rotate off, and we appreciate your service, but, you know, obviously, this would be something, once the council is set here in a couple of weeks, and get a new council set and move to bring us all together on one page, and as much as we can. So I think that in the spirit of what Councilmember Hernandez was talking about, that's just following up on that. More to come. Hopefully, we get some dates on that moving forward. All right.
Thank you, Mayor.
Hearing no other real discussion on that, I appreciate it. Ms. Rohn, would you call for the vote on item C as in Charlie?
Wait a minute, I got a couple of things.
Okay, got to be quick, Woody. I'm going to move through this.
Yeah, I know, Adrian pulled it, and I was going to pull it, he didn't. I just have some questions on some of the vehicles that's on there and to get some kind of clarification. I know there's two Tahos on there at 65,000 apiece and two Expeditions, the largest SUV that Ford makes at 65,000 apiece. And I was wondering, what are these Ford vehicles going to be used for? Anybody got an answer?
Well, yeah, we talked about, I mean, it was listed. I'm trying to catch up now, so.
Woody, are they being purchased or are they being replaced? There's two Ford Expeditions that are 2008, and it looks like they're being replaced. I don't know if they're being replaced with Expeditions or something different.
But I was wondering, you know, those are really the most expensive that Chevrolet and Ford puts out. What are they going to be used for?
I'm trying to find the spot. Is it, if they're fire, I mean, those are used for multipurpose, and they haul extensive amounts of equipment. We put the inserts in there, and those budget amounts are for the total amount with communications, anything else that goes into those. So I'm trying to find which page and.
Clay, real quick, it's one, two, three, four. It's the fourth page through. It's the list of replacement vehicles.
You're correct. Those are the fire operation vehicles.
Yeah, it's a motor pool fund. There's two 2008 Ford Expeditions.
So, yes, those, I was assuming that, but I wanted to double check. So those are fire operation vehicles, and they tire, they haul extensive amounts of equipment to whatever they need, so. And they are replacements, as Mayor Cole alluded to.
Yeah, well, that's what I was wondering on those, if they were individually assigned to each one or if they used for the city, you know, within a period of time of using them to go to different places or what have you within other cities or meetings or what have you to carry people in. I know that we used to have that with the EDC in there to have people that came into town to visually go and look places, so. But I just wanted, because those are the two most expensive vehicles that, at these, you know, the Expedition is the largest vehicle that Ford puts out for an SUV. But if they're police and fire and what have you, that answers my question.
Okay. All right, any other questions? I don't want to cut anyone off. All right, hearing none. Ms. Rohn, would you call for the vote for item C as in Charlie?
Member Carbone.
Aye.
Member Little.
Aye.
Member Hernandez.
Aye.
Member Moore.
Aye.
Member Perez.
Aye.
Member Owens.
Aye.
Member Orlando.
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero to adopt the second reading of ordinance number 1595-1.
All right, moving on, we'll go to item F as in Frank. Councilmember Moore, would you place that on the table for discussion?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Consideration, possible action, resolution number R2020-265, so moved.
Second, Hernandez.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Open for discussion?
Yeah, this is Woody. I asked for it to be opened up and for discussion. As best I remember, we don't get anything that's outstanding on this each year to discuss what it is on there and where it's at, but it's how much, you know, the questions I have is how much did we spend last year? And how much did the city receive on billings at the rate of return? You know, on that for having these people send out the billings and what have you on there, so. And let's see, what was outstanding that was billed? You know, if we had something, how much did we bill out for the use of the ambulances, the EMS and that? And how much did they bill out? How much did we receive? And what have you on there to get some kind of understanding of the money? And it just says that, you know, on page three or four says the direct pass-through cost is $1,496 a month, and I don't know, I don't know what the pass-through is, you know. But I think, you know, since I've been on council, I've never had anyone come up do a presentation on that of the ambulances and EMS or what we do, and we bill out to the insurance and what have you, and how much is being billed out and how much we recover. And then where does it show up within the budget process, you know, of how much money that we did receive? And so we've never really had any kind of presentation on this and then finding out what this cost of $1,496 a month, $1,496. So there's just some questions that I don't think we've ever received that.
So I'll answer that. It says in the AR that the current spend is 110 and the estimated amount is 130. So there's two billing periods left, as it says, so the estimate is the 130. And every year, we have in the budget, the detail that you're all provided, the revenue for billings on ambulance transports. I don't know if John McCarter's on or has it handy, or we can follow up to you, but this is not, you know, it's, John, what's the number on that? Or Vance?
This is Vance. The net collections for FY '20 was about 2.4 million. The expense with the MSC was about 110,000.
Well, that's what I was wondering, you know, we've not received, you know, council's not receiving any kind of update on those to see what it was, and going back several years before, we only sent out one bill. You know, and bill one time for someone that was carried by, for a resident of Pearland, that we would send out one bill and hopefully that, you know, it would be paid for, for their own insurance or whatever, but if it couldn't pay it, we didn't bill again. But having said that, I haven't seen anything, you know, over the years up to date that we have really had a discussion on what we've said on this and what we actually paying to be billed out and what's coming back in.
Again, remember Owens, in every budget that you've gotten, and by same token, I don't think I've ever had a single question about the amount that we've billed or anything like that. I'd be happy to share that, but as Vance mentioned, it's over $2 million that is part of our cost recovery on that, and we bill extensively with the insurance companies. We also pursue with Medicare, there's a separate federal grant program, get reimbursed that, but this billing just sends out the bills for that to garner back that.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. I wish at some point in time we would have, you know, and probably in the budget process that we could sit down and make sure that what we're paying out, that we're getting back and a percentage of it, and it's worthwhile, you know, to do it. So that's the only thing I, because I've not seen anything that somebody actually said, you know, what's a percentage of recovery when it was paid to bill out, so I appreciate that information.
Yeah, real quick, by way of sharing, I know for a fact we bill it because I've made an ambulance run with me in the back of the ambulance before. So that's for another story for another time, but, and I know it was billing more than once, and it was something that we paid, and again, I don't know how much of that cost recovery, and I don't know how much we do on an annual basis, but I know part of our annual budget for firing EMS is a portion of reimbursements of people paying for their, you know, ambulance runs, whether it's, you know, downtown at the medical center or, you know, close by, you know, out at 288 or over here off of Beamer with Memorial Hermann. So, and the people of EMS do a great job doing that and caring for patients. So with that, is there any other questions or comments on item F as in Frank?
No, I don't either.
All right, with that, Madam Secretary, would you call for the vote?
Member Moore.
Aye.
Member Perez. Member Perez, thank you. Thank you. Member Owens.
Aye.
Member Orlando.
Aye.
Member Carbone.
Aye.
Member Little.
Aye.
Member Hernandez.
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero to adopt resolution number R2028-265.
All right, good deal. Moving on to matters removed, well, we just talked about matters removed from consent agenda. We'll move into item number seven, new business, new business item number one. Can I get Councilmember Hernandez to put that on the table?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, resolution number R2020-117.2, so moved.
Second, more.
We have a motion and a second. Open for discussion? Our council, excuse me, staff report first.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Mayor Council, we are here tonight to provide another update on our use of the federal pass-through monies, the CARES Act money that the state distributed. City found out this summer that there was going to be monies coming through for, that the city of Pearland would be responsible for and accountable for distributing as part of the pandemic relief. And so we've all been learning and adapting and trying to deploy those monies as best we can. There is a hard deadline for the end of this year. If we have like just over three weeks left before these monies have to be spent, and so we're here tonight with an update on that. So Joel Hardy's going to give you an update and an overview, and then we have two items that kind of flow from that for amending past amounts for support to our public schools in Pearland for their distribution of technologies. They've had to adapt as well. So ask Joel to take it away. He's got a PowerPoint for us.
Thank you, Clay. All right, Mayor Council, once again, as Clay mentioned, we're back to discussing some coronavirus relief fund-related information. This pertains to an effort to bring to you an opportunity to kind of finalize our plan and wrap this up and put a nice bow on it prior to making the final closeout activities prevail for reimbursement for the programs we're eligible for. And so this would be Plan Revision Two. And so this would be plan revision two. And just for the sake of those that may not be aware in the public and, and council, new, new mayor Cole, the general overview provides us with some information. We've talked about at the early onset phase of this. The state was allocated CARES Act fund from the U.S. Treasury, approximately eleven billion dollars. There were several large cities and counties that got their money directly from the treasury out of that allocation. And the state was gracious enough to take a portion of the remaining costs and allocate those to small cities below and counties below five hundred thousand in population. Of course, Pearland, being in Brazoria County, is a small city, also located in a small county in that regard. So we got a fifty-five dollar per capita based on the two thousand nineteen census population of a hundred and fifteen thousand, which came to about six point three million dollars. That excluded the portions of the city in Fort Ben and Harris, but those were recaptured through separate allocations from those larger counties that are coming to the city based on that same per capita allocation. Harris County being two eighty-eight and about fifty-six thousand coming from Fort Ben. And the total CRF funding we've been dealing with for the CARES Act related portion of our available funds is six point seven million dollars. So as we covered in past discussions, one of the tough challenges we've had is to come up with a, a spending process that allocates based on the seventy-five twenty-five rule. This is something that the state imposed on its grantees. So the Harris and Fort Ben County allocations of funds do not have to comply with this rule, but for the state issued expenses that relate to our Brazoria County area, we have to spend seventy-five percent on medical expenditures, those related to public health or payroll expenses for public safety, public health, and several other similar activities. Then we've got the twenty-five percent that is sort of up to us as far as how we choose to spend those funds within three additional categories. Those related to facilitating compliance with COVID nineteen related public health measures, the kinds of things that come out of the CDC, for example, ability to provide economic support for our community. And we've done it with some business recovery grant activities and any other COVID nineteen related expenses reasonably necessary to satisfy the funds eligibility criteria. And we've used that in some areas as well that I'll discuss in later slides. The local impact on this, of course, was there were some difficult challenges in that we've got a couple of different sets of rules to play by. And as well as trying to meet the local needs in the, in the community, coordinating those between the two different types of allocations have been a challenge as well, especially since those rules are not applicable to the Fort Ben and Harris portions of the city. So we originally came to council back in June and then again in August to kind of perfect our, our plan and our work in an ongoing fashion, but are coming tonight to solidify what the final outcomes we believe this staff should represent. And we're trying to stay within those medical, public health and payroll expenditures to the extent that we cover the seventy-five percent required spending that pertains to the state issued area. And so we've got in the medical and public health arena, what looks to be our actuals for the coronavirus relief fund in the form of seventy-four hundred dollars for mental health services. Counseling Connections has requested that amount. We originally had a larger allocation intended for that agency, but they were also benefit from several other CARES Act sources of funds and did not need as much money as, as they originally anticipated. So we've received the information from them this week, in fact, that says that this is probably what they're going to need to close out their needs through December thirtieth of, of this year. We've been also testing our wastewater treatment facilities for the presence of coronavirus. And that results in about a ten thousand dollar allocation to a testing company that's providing those on a weekly basis. We did hire a public health advisor. We originally anticipated spending forty thousand there. The actuals on that looked more like an eighty-eight thousand dollar expenditure. And we've also incurred some costs when it comes to PPE facility improvements and other activities to make sure our environments and the public health and public safety domains we operate in, our public facilities are safe and free from coronavirus and to the tune of three hundred thousand dollars for continuity of operations. And we've been cleaning our facilities. We've got facility retrofits coming online and to the tune of about seven hundred and fifty thousand. One of the new items that we'll be discussing tonight in this discussion, as well as ensuing two items, are additional allocations. We'd recommend going to the public schools, the Alvin Independent School District and the Pearland Independent School District, which would amount to one point four million dollars as opposed to the two hundred sixty thousand that we originally planned to, to allocate. And then we've got about two point five million in payroll expenses, a large portion of which is the day-to-day dedicated response from our staff and a portioned out based on the Brazoria County portion of work, the Harris County portion of work and the Fort Ben County portion of work that our police, fire, public works and other critical staff have endeavored to provide the community. And lastly, in that regard, we last week were able to issue payments to employees that fit the description of our hazard pay qualifications, those who are on the front lines and have a dedicated day-to-day responsibility that interact with the public in a way that we have very little control over, if any. And to the extent that they were not able to work remotely, these employees received up to nine hundred dollars in different tiers to a total of five hundred thousand dollars in hazard pay. And then we've got some of our programmatic activities that support our technology enhancements that were necessary to keep our continuity of operations a priority. The meetings that we've been able to hold remotely with council and the public and the people that we do business with on a day-to-day basis, including internal operations, we will be incurring about a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars in those costs. And then we've got our rental assistance program and our business recovery program, both of which are operating at five hundred and eighty-eight thousand and eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand respectively. I provided a lot of this detail in my discussion, but just wanted to have a slide with some bullet points in case there were questions about some of the specific activities that we're conducting in these areas. We've been able to use the funds to procure some air claved devices that will allow us to sanitize our vehicles and small office spaces. We're fogging and sanitizing city facilities on a daily basis. And we've got some department initiated protocols for making sure people are using cleaning supplies and sanitizer to prevent the spread of coronavirus amongst our employees. And you're very familiar with the public facility improvements. We've talked about those in previous discussions. And I want to make sure you're aware of some of those details as, as well. And I just talked about the field-based assignment pay that employees received last week. Couple of specific updates about what we've been able to do in the business recovery and rental assistance domains. We originally thought we would be able to allocate an eight hundred thousand in recovery grants. We've actually been able to exceed that a little bit in a fully subscribed program that is going to fund sixty-one businesses with ranging grants from seventy-five hundred dollars up to the maximum fifteen thousand dollars. Of the thirty-four ineligible applicants, about seventeen of those, which is pretty much half, were outside the city limits and located in the ETJ and ineligible for those purposes. And then we've got some that were ineligible because they were home-based businesses or they lacked the documentation necessary to qualify for participation in the program. On the rental assistance side, we've got to date two hundred and twenty-nine thousand that's been authorized for payment. That will cover about a hundred and ten tenants residing at thirty-five properties within the city limits. And we've got a possible additional hundred and thirty thousand that's pending review. And if we have the availability of funds, we'd like to be able to cover December rent for those applicants that have not received two months of rental assistance over the course of our period of performance. And that's our, our, our requirement that they be eligible for no more than two months. So if a tenant has received only one month, we'll hopefully be able to provide an additional month of assistance. So this slide kind of talks about some of the basis for our final adjustments. Of course, the seventy-five twenty-five spending policy is one that we've always got our eyes on. And in doing so, we would need to make sure that four million seven hundred and eighty thousand five hundred and four dollars of our allocation are spent on the medical, public health and personnel and payroll related costs. We've also been the recipient of new guidance on eligible expenses and how we can expend our funds related to dedicated personnel that are substantially focused on the coronavirus pandemic. The first being guidance we've received from the state that allows us to support local education agencies and their operation connectivity costs. The T E A has a program that allows recipients of the coronavirus relief fund at the local level to support local education agencies with a dollar for dollar state match, if you will, for twenty-five percent of A I S D and P I S D's eligible costs. And the way that works is it actually ends up being fifty percent of their cost share. But we would allocate a dollar and the state would allocate another dollar, both leading up to that twenty-five percent per entity in support of these two jurisdictions eligible, eligible costs. So that's a very important consideration as the Pearland Independent School District, for example, has issued about twelve million dollars, thirteen million dollars in costs related to their operation connectivity program. A I S D's is a little bit lower, well, a lot lower actually, as far as what's eligible for Pearland reimbursement, simply because there's a percentage of the student body and facilities that fall within the city limits. And that kind of outlines how much we would be able to invest in their overall costs. And another recent update that we've received from the U.S. Treasury indicates that there's some clarification available as to how dedicated personnel are defined for our public safety and public health employees, particularly our police and fire. This simply means that those are automatically are presumed to be considered substantially dedicated to coronavirus efforts, and we do not have to provide, per that guidance, the substantial amount of backup documentation in the form of time and effort documentation, timesheets and things like that to determine what's eligible as far as costs. And we're actually able to identify a hundred percent of their costs as being considered substantially dedicated to coronavirus relief. So in that regard, we have the availability to spend our money, not just in the Harris County and Fort Ben County allocations as such, but any non-duplicated expenses for Brazoria County as well. And then the other programs we've got basically an actual versus plan subscriptions perspective about how those dollar amounts pan out for our uses. And as I've mentioned, that's the truth where the mental health allocation, the rental assistance program, testing and public health expenses. And the last one pertains to our initial thought that we could give out a lot more money to businesses in support of their PPE and sanitizing costs. But somewhere along the line, we discovered that that would not be an eligible expense under the seventy-five percent portion of funds we need to spend. So we pulled that back and kind of put it on hold until better options came available to us. And I think now that we've got this updated guidance from the T E A through Tedom and the U.S. Treasury on the dedicated personnel side, we're in a better position to make recommendations for our final allocations a look. So just to go into a little bit more detail on the treasury guidance we've received about dedicated personnel. Again, this relates to our public safety and public health employees. So firing EMS, police is really where this sits. They're presumed to be substantially dedicated and we do not have to provide demonstrative evidence for showing what their employee functions and duties were. Nothing to show that they were substantially different use than what was originally budgeted. And we simply have to maintain payroll supportive documents for the amounts that we request reimbursement for through the CRF. And then that second guidance we received also late October and, and early November related to operation connectivity. Again, that dollar for dollar match towards a state-funded CRF, operation connectivity costs, sis with that fifty percent matching requirement, twenty-five percent each from the state and the local CRF, they match whatever dollar amount we provide up to twenty-five percent each. And we'll cover some of the technology, hardware, software licensing and other connectivity costs for the eligible districts that have eligible expenditures. And, and the rest of that money will come to those districts from the T E A. So with that said, that pretty much is it for my presentation. We just wanted to make sure you were aware of the kind of actual cost expenditures and recommendations we're making to, to bring this to a close. And with that, our next steps would be to document and extend the remaining funds in accordance with the, with the requirements by the end of the year. There'll be a project closeout and reporting that we'll probably have to participate in beyond that. We do want to mention that we are on the lookout for some additional opportunities that may come during the two thousand twenty-one calendar year. We're hearing that a similar allocation is going to be made to states and local governments should that measure pass Congress. And I believe it's right now to the tune of about a hundred and sixty million, a hundred and sixty billion, which is pretty much close to what the CARES Act provided state and local governments. So with that said, we are here to accept any questions and conversation and I'll pass back the balance to Mayor and Council.
All right. Mr. Pearson, do you have any additional?
Thanks, Mayor. I, I just would like to take a step back and, and recognize, I want to express appreciation for Joel and P D C. A lot of people have worked on this, standing up these new programs. Any one of them would have been a challenge, but to do the rental assistance and the business assistance and, and then all the reimbursements and all the tracking. And I know council is appreciative and I just want to echo that and thank you. And we're in the home stretch here and nothing's guaranteed as, as Joel said, but we're hopeful that, you know, there'd be another stimulus package and we'll plan, we'll administer whatever comes down for that, sir. Thank you so much.
Well, the good thing there is if a second one comes, we've, we're teed up for, for round two. We kind of know what we're doing based on round one. Joel, thank you for a good presentation. I do have a couple of questions real quick, if I might. Go back to the presentation, the rental assistance slide, somewhere around slide nine, I think. Okay. So to date, we've done, just shy of two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And if I remember correctly, if you go back a couple of slides in our total allocation, we've got somewhere around a half a million, yeah, here, five hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars. So here's my, my question to that. I mean, we're in December, it's December the seventh. And this is a plan that we have to have it spent by the end of the year. Is there a possibility of having basically half of that five hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars not spent?
No, Mayor. And actually, we do have some administrative costs that will fall into the same part of the allocation for our consultants at Impact. It probably won't be to the extent that their contract value has been set. They did have a, I think roughly two hundred and thirty thousand dollar price tag, but that was always contingent upon the maximum level of activity. And I think, you know, we're, we're notably undersubscribed. But we do still have a portion of consideration that could be made for the month of December that would ostensibly bring us to that, that five hundred eighty-eight thousand. So that number is, is based on some projections that we've worked on with the consultant. And we want to try to maximize the opportunity to make some quick outlays if we have to. And this week would be the time to do that. So tomorrow, in fact, we'll know a lot more about where we stand as far as the program's capability is concerned. But yes, that number could go down.
Okay. And then on that same slide, number seven, payroll dedicated employees, the almost two and a half million. It says payroll dedicated to response to the pandemic, almost two million. Is that a reimbursement or is that a, an outlay above and beyond? Or how, how is that categorized here locally? Is that a, like I said, is that a reimbursement to us?
So good question. For the Brazoria County portion, we've always used the methodology that our time and effort, regardless of whether someone's working in a public safety or public health domain, or if they're I am incident command planning or our, our everyday employees and different other functions that, that those timesheets that they complete that specifically determine the actual work they've undertaken. You know, we'd use that amount. That specifically determine the actual work they've uh uh undertaken. Uh, you know, we'd use that amount. Um, to kind of make forecasts and projections as to what the the total program cost would look like. And I think we're at a at a responsible number there with that one point six million dollar for the Brazoria County portion. And I say that because the Texas state of uh the state of Texas uh uh portion that's coming from Tedom. Um, is providing the lion's share of those costs, obviously. So uh, we've been very conservative with that uh budget, simply because we want to be able to do other things. But then we've got Harris County and Fort Ben's portions that are available to us. Um, based on a, you know, per capita share of the population in those areas. Um, less service activity, of course, than in Brazoria County, but also without the seventy-five, twenty-five rules. And some encouragement from the county officials in those regards, uh, we've uh chosen to recommend that we use the. Uh, provision in that treasury guidance to bring those dollars in based on the hundred percent. Of our time and effort uh for public safety and public health employees uh based on the pro- share of all costs. Um, being incurred by the city over the course of the coro- coronavirus pandemic. So in most cases, we would request reimbursement for that two eighty-eight and that fifty-six thousand. Just based on the fact that our police and fire have been in those areas and we're considering a hundred percent of their time and effort. Having been uh applicable to the coronavirus uh response. But with Brazoria County's portion coming from the state, we didn't want to just recommend that we use all our funds in that regard. Um, so we've been a little bit more documentation oriented and uh believe we have what we need in order to to get to that level. Uh, with our costs. If anything, we may provide the state with the whole shebang. And show them that our our police and fire and public safety efforts have constituted uh a dollar amount that's much larger than one point six million. But request the amount necessary to make our seventy-five, twenty-five splits um meet the requirements and and keep the. The 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 spending allocations in line with the state requirements, if that makes sense.
It does, and I I appreciate that. Like I said, I just want to put that on the table to see how that. Uh, is being handled. With that, I'll I'll throw it open to the uh the council members for questions. Great presentation, staff, by the way. Thank you.
Joel, this is Adrian. I was, sorry, was someone else going?
No, you're good. Go ahead.
Um, thank you, Mayor. Uh, so on the uh, the, what you were just saying about the Missouri County portion of the dedicated employees. Are you saying that uh there is a more accurate number as far as the total? Expenditure for police and fire in the Missouri County portion, and do you have an idea of what that actually is?
Um, yeah, I would say for for the entire jurisdiction, we have an accurate depiction of what our actual costs were because. All of our employees that are dedicated to this work are on a pay period basis. Um, documenting their time and effort and have done so since the beginning of our work. So we have that across the board. Um, but specific to uh your question in Brazoria County, yes, we do have that. And based on the uh initial transfer that we did through September thirtieth to close out the fiscal year. Um, our projections indicate that we're pretty much um in sight with what that one point six million dollars represents uh through December thirtieth.
All right, uh, let me digest it. I'll open up to other members. Thank you.
I'll uh I'll jump in first. Just wanted to uh reiterate what Clay said and and just say, thanks, Joel. I mean, you always do. Uh, incredible work, but I know this has been a a a whole different breed of thing, just with the. All the the difficulty associated with it and the challenges and and moving targets. So. Uh, thank you and thanks for being so responsive and and uh being able to explain this all for us. I I know it's greatly appreciated. Um, pushing a little more on uh on on some of this revised guidance. So a- and we discussed this a little bit earlier, but uh my understanding is that. With with the recent guidance changes, you've seen some other cities kind of use that to to more aggressively um. More aggressively request uh personnel reimbursements. And so I think I have two parts here. Uh, the first, uh, we'll just ask your feedback on the first and move on to the second. The first is if there are any um, if there are any unexpended funds to to Mayor Cole's point earlier. Um, not just with the rental assistance, but in any category, uh, could we prioritize making sure that? Uh, the taxpayers of Pearland get the full value that they're able to get from the CARES Act by uh. Making a a appropriate personnel reimbursement requests up to the the ceiling of this six point seven million.
I think that would be our objective would be, you know, if your answer's simple, we don't want to leave any money on the table. And bring those dollars back to the community so that we could uh potentially use them for other related purposes uh beyond the. End of the period of performance. So yes, I think that's our um, that's one of our meteor objectives.
Great. And and then I think this would be one that would require some more council um a agreement around, but. So some of the allocation changes that we're making tonight where we're uh allocating funds to other jurisdictions. Uh, again, this guidance just came out like two weeks ago, but I I think it it would be uh acceptable to um. You know, given council consent, it it would be a possibility to consider moving some of those funds uh in a similar direction. In terms of personnel reimbursements.
Uh, that would, of course, be up to council and uh, you know, I think the staff recommendation is there um for a number of reasons. Um, one, I just want to make sure we're safe and secure as far as how we spend these funds. And uh, don't proceed in an area that um the state might quibble over when it comes to uh audits and inspections and things like that. Um, you know, we've been doing work with uh that particular division of state government for many years. With regard to our disaster response from hurricanes and things like that. And uh their auditors are kind of in a direct line of sight with the regulations and rules. Much more so than we are sometimes, and especially with this, just because it's been so loosely put together, I hate to say it. And uh, as you mentioned, we're receiving guidance on this program uh two weeks ago for things that need to be dealt with in the next two weeks. So um, we just kind of use some care and caution and dealing with the state funds, which was, you know, while we were kind of hesitant to proceed with a full scale. Um, reimbursement of of personnel expenses. But um, if council felt like the allocations uh to the uh um external entities were warranting some some additional review. Um, you know, we would conduct business accordingly and um do what we need to do to make sure we 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 proceed with a reimbursement that works for the for the city.
Absolutely. Yeah, I I appreciate that and and certainly appreciate that this is all uh, you know, been sprung on you uh at the very last minute. Um, I I think that's something that I would be interested in discussing further if there is uh. Interest from the other council members just in terms of, you know, I mean, this is a, this is an ongoing event and that it's. And and sorry, I'm getting a little bit of feedback, but uh to the extent that we can um, you know, get reimbursements for for your. Things that were expenses that we've incurred, uh, I I think that's going to be um. Uh, an important path to go down. So I'll I'll wait to see if other uh what other members have on that.
Hey, hey, Joel, um, would you go to s- to the slide that talks about that fif- that uh dollar for dollar match? Uh, thing from the T E A. Yeah, so that um. So I mean, this, we're essentially doubling the the value. So so what what's going out the tonight, I guess, in the the next few agenda items? Um, we're kind of how T D E M is acting as a conduit from the federal government to us with the CARES dollars. You know, where there's an incentive, I guess, from the the state for us to. Uh, or as we push that, if we flow that through, then they'll come in and match an additional dollar for dollar. Um, due to this connectivity. Am I, am I thinking through that correctly?
Uh, yeah, I believe so. That's that's my understanding. And, you know, again, some of that guidance is new too. And 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 limited, but the way I've read through it, um, um, they will, for every dollar we match, provide, match with an another with another dollar. And up to us both providing twenty-five percent each of the costs incurred eligible expenses of the uh district. Um, and up to fifty percent of their um actual allocations. We probably won't get there because they spent P I S D, for example. Thirteen million dollars, but um i- in in their eyes, you know, anything helps.
Yeah, and so I I guess tonight when we're talking about on agenda item two and three, these large increases. And these are, that's just the dollars coming from from the city to the school districts, and then they'll get an additional match on top of that.
For the portion of their costs that go towards operation connectivity. So I I probably think it's important for me to mention that with both of those districts, there are other costs. Involved in those subrecipient allocations or subwarranty allocations. Because they'll be incurring costs and having incurred costs where P P E, equipment, some of the same things we're doing as far as facility. Uh, expenses and um, you know, that those dollar amounts are are fairly well flushed out. But, you know, we've kind of given them some leeway to make sure they can uh cover the expenses they need. So I would uh just uh recommend that if if we're considering any changes, that we consider the fact that some of that base um level um. Uh, allocation that we made in Au- in August uh should be retained because uh some of these dollars aren't going to operation connectivity. They're going to help the districts perform in in a safe environment in other ways.
Okay, a- any a- any estimate on on on, I guess, what dollar dollar level they're getting the match on?
Uh, well, uh, again, A I S D has limited uh um, you know, ability to function in the in that regard when it comes to Pearland. Because twenty-two and a half percent of the district is is serving Pearland students. So um, you know, that limits their uh operation connectivity costs and others. Um, and so uh, I'd say they're probably at where they need to be. Um, with uh uh Pearland, uh, they've probably got uh um about three or four hundred thousand dollars. In eligible costs when it comes to equipment, P P E, um, um, sneeze guards and things that they've done in the in the schools to. Um, prevent the spread of the virus and and of course, you know, a much larger portion of the city's school age population.
Yeah, okay, that certainly makes sense. Uh, again, I appreciate your hard work and uh. Yeah, I appreciate it.
Any other comments? Hearing, actually, Joel, I do have one quick question and it's. And I and this is, this has been a a fluid operation. I mean, obviously. Uh, the way the federal government does, they push, they're pushing money out and then they come with the rules later. So. Uh, and you're getting an up- an update to those rules, you know, like I said, in the last couple of weeks. We now have, you know, the possibility of a second round coming, uh, you know, hopefully soon. And we've got things like a vaccine and other things, you know, rolling out. Are are we looking at at vaccine-related costs? And and how is that affecting our local taxpayers? Is that something that we are anticipating with being round two of a? A CARES, you know, a CARES two type funding, or what are we looking at there? Or is that dollars? Do we have, obviously, it'd be after these dollars are spent, but how does that look?
I I would say very similar to this program uh now, so uh I wouldn't anticipate there being much change in a second round of this type of allocation. And that states and local governments would be able to continue the kind of work we've already been doing. Um, I would also say that it would behoove us to uh, if we can advocate at the state level. To eliminate that seventy-five, twenty-five rule set or mitigate it somehow. So it pares down a little bit because that's been a a tough one. Uh, but you mentioned the vaccines. Those would fall into the medical costs that are part of that seventy-five, twenty-five. So if they did ca- keep it and insist on it, uh, we could definitely be investing in ways that uh offset any citizens' costs or unmet uh un. Um, uh, underserved needs when it comes to those costs and 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 support those with our allocation.
Okay, good.
And it's part of our uh incident command structure um in that uh those set of uh priorities. We've got that uh set up for our discussions and oversight in there. So um, that's something we've got our our eyes on. Um, and if if I could, Mayor, I'd like to say I appreciate the comments about, you know, the hard work and everything. It certainly is uh important for us to hear that, but you know, it's been a team effort and uh multidisciplinary across all lines throughout the organization. People have just been very uh active and and supportive and proficient in helping us through this uh, you know, from finance to. Um, city secretary to legal um and um, just in every way you can imagine. So. Uh, I can't take all the credit, you know, we've got a good thriving uh system of uh mutual supports all over the place and and that's what's. Made this a whole lot easier. It would have been impossible to do without those uh factors in place. So I just want to throw that out there.
Well stated. Uh, just Clay, as a matter of uh housekeeping, I know we had a uh legislative. Meeting today with uh Representative Thompson and Senator Taylor. Uh, this might be something if we haven't already, but to send a memo to them. On round two about this seventy-five, twenty-five. I know it is a sticking point because we don't get our monies directly from the federal government. Uh, when it comes to the state and the state placed this seventy-five, twenty-five. It wasn't the federal government that did that. So. Let's uh, it may be something that we we send a memo to them to work on. Uh, just to make sure that we get the monies where it needs to go. So.
Will do. Thank you.
All right, uh, any other questions before we move on? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, would you call for the vote on item new business number one?
Member Hernandez. Member Hernandez.
Um, there he is. Yeah, so can you clarify something uh for me really quickly? We're we're voting right now just on the overall plan, but the. Separate allocations that are coming up are okay.
Yeah, the the impact recovery plan, just the plan itself.
Yeah, okay, I I, thank you.
Okay.
Member Moore?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbon?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero to adopt resolution number R twenty twenty dash one one seven point two.
All right, thank you. Uh, we'll move on to uh new business item number two. Uh, Councilmember Perez, would you put that on the table for us?
Happy to do so. Consideration and possible action resolution number R twenty twenty dash one nine three dot one. So moved.
Second.
Think I heard Councilmember Moore uh there for a second. So we have a motion and a second. Uh, we're into uh staff presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, this is uh, as we just talked about, the first of two resolutions with our public school districts that are. Uh, predominantly and have the facilities in the city of Pearland. Uh, first one being with Pearland I S D and the second with Alvin I S D. Uh, we've stayed in touch with them and uh providing the connectivity for their students to uh continue learning remotely has been uh critical. And so that is an eligible expense. I would also note, uh, you know, especially based on some of the prior conversations that. Um, you know, our objective is to get these monies uh distributed through Pearland one way or another. Uh, as long as they're eligible uh by the end of the calendar year here. And so I I think in some ways uh this provides the uh the max cap. Um, if we wanted to uh, if council chose and would like to do some uh amendments, uh, we've got one more meeting next week. Um, we could provide an update, but um, you know, uh, this the to this resolution that's the least presented would allow us to go up to these amounts. Um, you know, Pearland uh I S D with uh their facilities in the city and eligibility is up to the uh substantially from the. Uh, original amount of one hundred and thirty thousand and one point one million. And then Alvin I S D is up uh from the one thirty to three hundred. So if council desires, we can adopt these as is, or we can uh amend these caps and then look at uh redistribution. Uh, within the eligible categories, uh, at least for. within the eligible categories, at least for perhaps city expenses, increasing that to balance that out. Nothing to answer.
All right, good. Thank you. I'll throw it open to the to the members for questions. I know there's a couple of comments about both actually action new business number two and three. I know we're we're taking two first, but I think both the the comments are applicable to both. So I'll throw it open to the members.
Mayor, I guess I would just kind of go and build on what I said previously. And if there's an opportunity for us to get additional funding for personnel or other personnel related expenses. I would just really like to see us capture that and put it towards, you know, our expenses rather than the I S D's expenses. I'm just trying to think. I know that there's a very limited timeline. And I asked a question of Mr. Hardy previously, just trying to get an idea of what with this limited timeline, what do you think? Or do we even know what a a ceiling type number would be for potentially eligible expenses in the personnel category?
So I I think anything below our actual costs that we've incurred related to facility improvements, rental assistance, business recovery, you know, all those unspent dollars could be subject to reimbursement from the state. So in that regard, anything that we haven't allocated, we could utilize our what's called the per se and for administrative convenience rules to bring about reimbursement for those personnel costs. And that would fall back to the seventy-five percent.
So Joel, just if I could interject, if if we weren't to increase this at all for the school districts and there was, you know, one point four million additional or call whatever the net would be a million, could we find eligible expenses for the city reimbursed to a million dollars?
Along the lines of personnel, yes.
Okay, so Member Hernandez, we could reimburse ourselves potentially another million if we wanted to and forego the increases. You know, we started doing this work, you know, based on the other guidance and trying to expand what we agreed to earlier. So you know, maybe there's some middle ground or something like that that you'd like to explore.
And if I can add to that, Clay, one thing we have already done is, and I don't think this locks us in a hundred percent. We would probably have to revise this and send it back to T D M. But we were required to provide T D M with a spending plan by November the fifteenth. And for planning purposes, you know, we did have kind of a we presented a version of our spending plan that would correlate with what we're asking council to concur with now.
I'm sorry, Mr. Hardy, can you expand upon that comment just a little more? Are you saying that we're not necessarily locked into something, but we followed a plan? Is that does that factor into this equation somehow?
It does, but it's not a hundred percent locked in. If we had to resubmit a revised spending plan to T D M, we could. But that plan kind of gave them an estimate of how we would allocate our funds and very similar to our recommendation here tonight.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hardy. Mayor, yeah, I don't I don't mind trying to find a compromise somewhere, but I would like to see additional funding go towards city related expenses. That concludes my comments.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a I have a question that I I think is kind of echoed from comments that member Carbon made. I mean, so just so we're clear here. It pretty much, I I I think we're all on the same page that, you know, we committed to giving each school district a hundred and thirty thousand back a couple of months ago. I I don't think anyone has a desire to detract or to take money from that. But in terms of anything incremental, what what it sounds like is that that is money that could be used for fifty or even three reimbursements. And so to to member Carbon's point earlier, and it is compelling that there is a matching component. I guess I would say, do we have a number in here? For Alvin I S D especially, it was unclear to me. If Alvin I S D had expenses that that even could be met. Because, you know, I I think that's something to consider that if we give the money to school districts, it can be masked, but certainly if it's it's not going to be or to the extent that it's not going to be, I think that's an easy one that, you know, we have priorities at the city level as well that we could request reimbursement for.
Yeah, I think Alvin's situation is probably not as solvent, if you will, as as P I S Ds. Again, just because only a small portion of the district services are allocated towards Pearland facilities and Pearland students. So you've got that twenty-two point five percent of anything we provide that has to be taken into consideration. So it's it's probably going to be more difficult for them to, you know, I think they'll reach that three hundred thousand that we're talking about, but not as easily as Pearland's. I mean, P I S D's costs are, I mean, they've got, you know, more than twelve million dollars that they've allocated towards their program. So and just to note that, you know, the dollars we provide allow them to get that other dollar match from the from the state.
Right. So maybe I I just I'm just throwing it out there as a discussion point. So it seems like you know, maybe an even number to do and kind of in line with what we were talking about originally. You could increase both up, you know, more than double what we committed to them before and give them both three hundred thousand dollars. And use the remaining eight, seven or so, eight hundred and seventy thousand in terms of city reimbursements. I'm just throwing that out for the rest of the council.
And I guess my my take on it is is both the three hundred and the the one point one going to Pearland that we're talking about now qualifies for the dollar for dollar match. I mean, and it's in line with the community impact recovery plan we just passed that Joel said was safe. Safe and secure in terms of kind of the fluid guidance coming out. So I I don't know, I I think I'm I might have a little bit more pause because of both of those issues, since since we would be foregoing kind of that extra dollar for dollar match and getting out of the this the the safe and secure terms of the grant. Kind of the auditing on the back end, because the last thing I want to do is leave money on the table because they they come back in and and auditors interpretation of the rules doesn't jive with us. So I'm I I think I'm inclined to to rely on on Joel. Joel and staff's original recommendation to 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 stick with the plan as we approved an agenda item one.
Okay, before we move on, I guess is there other comments from from council members on this action? Obviously, this action item number two is going to also potentially impact number three. Because I've heard suggestions, but ultimately we would need an amendment to to item number two.
Yes, Mayor, if I could, Mr. Hardy, so you had mentioned, and just for a point of clarification, that not the entirety of these additional funds would be eligible for the dollar to dollar match. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct, but only because they've got some, each district has some costs that haven't been funded with any grant funds or stimulus money that are more in line with facility improvements, expenses they can incur to make sure their air quality is safe and partitions and cafeterias and and those kinds of things, stuff similar to what we've done.
So could you could you take a stab in the dark and try to come up with even a percentage of of an amount that if we were to give particularly to Pearland I S D that would be eligible for that dollar to dollar? Or is that too tall of an order?
It well, I I think they've included in the packet is a breakdown of their technology device initiative. And all of those expenditures in that document are eligible for T E A operation connectivity. Now, clearly, we don't have the kind of money to match to provide them up to fifty percent of that. So anything we provide is probably appreciated. And their whole allocation in that regard is eligible for operation connectivity costs. So we wouldn't even come close to being able to reach the threshold of limits that program would have for us to be able to contribute to an I S D. And anything we did above and beyond that would exceed the requirements for their twenty-five twenty-five match. If that makes sense.
Uh, yeah.
We would need to be giving them three million dollars.
Got it. Okay. So, yeah, Mayor, as I mentioned previously, I'm I'm totally okay with making a compromise on this. And I think Member Orlando's move to try to do essentially a doubling of the original amounts and trying to take the leftover portion and apply it to the city. At least in my eyes is the best move for the residents of the city of Pearland. So I could get behind something like that if there are other members that indicate. If they're okay with that, then I don't mind making a motion or even seconding a motion for that. But if not, then I think we'll just move forward with Mr. Hardy's recommendation. But I I do see that there's a valid compromise on the table. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Obviously, what's on the table is moving the amount from a hundred and thirty to one point one seven two five oh one. That's what's on the table. I haven't heard an amendment. Are there other members inclined to speak in favor of a of an amendment? Or certainly we can move forward with what's on the table.
Mayor, I think we need to go forward with the on the table right now and review it sometime later on if if the, you know, the money and the times there, Joel has put this together. And I think this is good for for the school districts to go ahead and move forward this at this time.
I think Pro Tim Little, did you have a comment as well?
Yeah, I'm inclined to follow the city and Joel's recommendations. Joel, one quick question. Has any of the original hundred thirty thousand dollars amount been allocated to the city? Have the funds been advanced?
They haven't. They haven't invoiced us yet, but I've seen expenditure documentation. So these are these are funds that pretty much have already been spent. And a lot of this money has already been outlaid by the districts. It's just a matter of us getting an invoice with the proper documentation related to the expenses they've incurred. And I think there's some operation connectivity items that Pearland I S D, for example, is taking action on on the fifteenth. And that would give them the ability to identify other expenses that they've incurred that are eligible and plan to incur. And we would be able to get all that done by December thirtieth.
And I I know this agreement calls for some pretty stringent reporting requirements by the the city, the sub awardee. Do you anticipate any problems from the school district in getting that information from them?
I've got assurances from both districts that they've got the documentation we need to proceed with a reimbursement request.
All right, and great job on that. I appreciate all the hard work you put into it. And the people that helped you also. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, appreciate it. Any other comments?
Mayor, if I could, ask one clarifying question, since this is all new. If Joel, if if one of the school districts, for some reason, were not able to get that documentation and and came up less, would we need to do anything to allocate more money for the city reimbursements, which seems like the next thing? It's been talked about without any other action by council? Or could we just do it administratively? Or how's that work?
Well, I think if council would give us that authority, we could definitely do that in the in the write-up for the prior item. You know, we did kind of express that we may need some latitude to adjust for compliance with the rules. And I think the prevailing objective would be to make sure we don't leave any money on the table. And it wouldn't take much for us administratively to identify that, you know, something's missing from the I S D reimbursement. And we need to proceed with a larger request for our personnel costs. And, you know, finance and our meeting daily to make sure we're prepared for that. So we're kind of keeping that contingency alive and available for us. If council and management believe we've got the authority to do so, if we run into a situation where it looks like we're leaving something on the table.
And so, Mayor, if I could, I suggest that rather than trying to undo something we just did, or, you know, this is so fluid that if we take a look at this with the light of day tomorrow and maybe we'll just add something on for the next agenda for yet another change that would give us that flexibility, just put some belts and suspenders on that.
That was a suggestion I was going to make was why don't we put something on the agenda for next week that that allows council to give directive to the staff for some administrative leeway or changes here to make sure that we don't leave money on the table. Whether it's reimbursement for ourselves or whatever, if we can document it, we need to make sure that that all of these monies stay here in town.
This this idea of the matches, I think we I'd like to get a little bit hundred percent clarity about that. And then, you know, making sure we file this with T D M to get their, you know, the amended plan and make sure we're not going to run any roadblocks there, I think is also something I'd like to see us do in the next couple of days.
Yeah, okay.
So are you asking for us to come in and table this to the next week?
No, what we're what we're looking to do is go ahead and move on to this and an action item for next Monday night would be to give staff some leeway. Let's assume for just a second, the school district can't document the dollars or something of that nature. And we we can give staff the leeway between now and the end of December to make sure that we keep these dollars local, because we can document at the city some additional expenses.
Okay.
Yeah. So not tabling this, but, you know, a new a new action item next week. Okay, so I don't hear any other calls for questions or concerns or or comments. So with that, Madam Secretary, would you call for the vote on the business item number two?
Member Perez? Member Owens? Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbon?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Moore?
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero to adopt resolution number R twenty twenty dash one nine three point one.
All right, thank you very much. And we'll move on to new business item number three, which is similar to item number two. Councilmember Owens, would you place that on the table for discussion?
Consideration possible action resolution number R twenty twenty dash one ninety-two point one. I so moved.
We have a motion and a second by Councilmember Moore. Staff report. Which should be the same report as item number two, but Clay, do you have anything to add?
Sorry, sir. Nothing to answer. I think we've covered it.
Okay. Any questions from council?
No, Mayor, I just wanted to add that I'm a lot more comfortable with the clarification provided. So thank you, Clay, for asking those questions. And thank you, Mr. Hardy, for walking us through this and for all your hard work. I appreciate it.
Good deal. There are no further questions. Madam Secretary, would you call some votes?
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbon?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Moore?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero to adopt resolution number R twenty twenty dash one nine two point one.
All right, good deal. And then item number four, Mayor Pro Tim Little, would you place that on the on the table for for discussion? And I guess before we do, by by way of house cleaning, Member Perez, I believe, is going to abstain from this from this item. Is that correct?
Yes, Mayor, for the benefit of the public, this is a project which my company has consulted on. We have not been compensated for any of the advice we've given on the project, but I think in fairness to the the public, it is not, we will, I will recuse myself from any votes pertaining to this project.
Very good. Councilmember Little?
Thank you, Mayor. After I table this item, then I'll call for the gentleman that wanted to speak on this particular agenda item.
Okay.
Consideration of possible action, first reading of ordinance number two thousand Uh, consideration of possible action, first reading of ordinance number two thousand M dash two-zero-seven. So moved.
Second, Hernandez.
We have a motion and a second by Councilmember Hernandez. Um, I guess traditionally, do we ask for the person to speak or should we get a staff report? I, I will state, uh, by way of, hang on a second, by way of background, the Planning and Zoning Commission, where is it? Did recommend approval, uh, vote of the commission for six to zero to recommend the approval of the PD amendment. So with that, why don't I get a staff report and then we can go to the, uh, uh, citizen that would like to speak?
Certainly, Mayor. Thank you. Uh, so this is an amendment to the planned development for, uh, Southern Trails. And this is for a property that's on the south side of, uh, Broadway, uh, immediately north of Shadow Creek High School. And the original, uh, PD called for this to be a, uh, community center use. Uh, I believe, I can't remember if the language is religious use, but that was the intent. Uh, subsequently, that, uh, property's been sold. And so the new owners came in at one time for a, uh, 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 dance studio use. And now they're coming back again to amend that for, uh, uh, drive-through, uh, limited, uh, usage there. So, uh, council saw this at a JPH and, uh, uh, we did not allow them to go with a, a modified, uh, community notice. They had to, we had to do the, uh, notifications to the entire PD area. Uh, did not get much impact, uh, feedback on that. And so I think that helps lead to a positive recommendations. And it's here for you for first reading. Nothing to answer.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tim Little, would you introduce our, uh, citizen to speak?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, Mr. Jeff Bout, are you online?
Yes, sir. I'm here.
Okay. Did you want to speak on, uh, this item or were you just here to answer questions from council?
Um, no, as the applicant, I would just wanted to make sure that I was here to answer questions in case anyone had any. Uh, there have been no changes since the joint public hearing. Um, so just here to answer questions in case anyone has any.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Great. Uh, thanks for, uh, thanks for attending and, and being here for any questions. I'll throw it open to the, uh, members for any questions if you have them. Hearing none. Madam Secretary, would you, uh, call for the vote?
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Moore?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Can't.
Member Perez?
Crystal, he can't, he can't vote on this.
Sorry. He recused himself.
That's right.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
The motion carries six to zero to approve the first reading of ordinance number, uh, two thousand M dash two oh seven.
Just, I guess for the record, want to make sure Councilmember Perez abstained from voting as well as discussion.
That is correct.
Okay. Good deal. Uh, we'll move on. Uh, item number eight, Mayor, council issues for, uh, council, city council discussion. There are none. Uh, item number nine, new business continued. There are none. Other business, ten, there are none. And I will move towards, uh, item number eleven, which is adjournment and council meeting adjourned at eight fifteen PM. All right.